Called me in order, if everyone can rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome to the meeting. We are gonna start off with our public to be heard. Carla, who do we have?
Sarah Keegan.
Sarah, feel free to step right up.
Hello, my name is Sarah. First, I'd like to thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak. I'm here to address some safety concerns that I have, which are deeply impacting my son. Currently, my son is an eighth grade student at Batavia Middle School. He's been battling bullying for over a year now, and it continues to escalate greatly. At the end of this past school year, he was attacked by a fellow student and his brother. On September tenth, he was again attacked by these two individuals, which resulted in him being sent to the hospital by ambulance. I was advised by the police department that due to the age of these children and nothing being broken, that nothing can be done. On September sixteenth, my son's father and older brother followed my son home. Again, these two students, with a group of fifteen others, ran after my son to attempt to beat him up again. My son's father was able to diffuse the situation, but in the interim, this boy and his brother hit my son's father in the nose, gave him a bloody nose. The police again then said that nothing could be done. The reason I'm addressing the school is that this threat has now leaked into the school. One of the attackers does not attend the school anymore and is no longer allowed on the school property. Instead, he waits across the street for my son, directly across from the middle school. His brother still attends the school and follows my son through the hallways and threatens to beat him up again inside of school. Since this incident, I have not let my son go to school until something safe, some type of safety protocol is put into place. My son already suffers from depression and anxiety, and this heightened act of harassment and bullying has deeply impacted his mental health. He's afraid to come to school, and his self-esteem and desire for learning are plummeting. He's a, unfortunately, we have seen an increase in children over the years committing suicide as a result of bullying. Not only am I concerned for his mental health, but his physical health as well. On September tenth, a fellow student at the middle school brought a knife. Luckily, another student brought it to the attention of an adult. However, what if they hadn't? What if that had been the boy that has been harassing my son? The rate of in-school violence has increased leaps and bounds, and as a parent, I'm deeply concerned, not just for the safety of my son, but for others as well. While there may already be an SRO officer in place, that officer is unable to be everywhere at all times. I would like to ask that the school enforce Section nine, Part D in the Code of Conduct, which covers bullying, cyberbullying, and harassment. I ask that repercussions come to these students who are attacking my son. I ask that teachers be made aware and increase our hallway presence for monitoring of these situations. I did a simple Google search, and I was also able to find numerous grants available to New York State schools to increase safety measures. These grants can cover things such as metal detectors at entrances, cameras to be placed in hallways, extra SRO officers, and just a few examples of what possibly could help. I'd like to ask that at dismissal, there be an increased presence of adults watching over the students as they leave. As I mentioned prior, that student waits for my son to leave the building, and even though I'll be picking him up going forward, as you may be familiar, it's hard to find a parking spot when everybody's there picking up their son. So often, I have to park down the street or across the street right where those boys wait for him. These students already hit his father, so clearly, they're not afraid of adults. While I understand the schools face many challenges, especially monetarily, I beg of you to please enact changes to increase the school's safety for both mental and physical well-being. I'm afraid to send my son to school now, and that's not a feeling any parent should have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
We, uh, we appreciate you coming in. A lot of times, uh, our, our meetings are always public, and unfortunately, I think some people hesitate on coming in, so we appreciate you coming in, advocating for your son. Uh, Mr. Smith will follow up with you, um, with Dr. Krine and
We're gonna call tomorrow.
Take a look, and Mr. Smith will follow up with you. But again, we appreciate you coming in and voicing that tonight.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate that.
Alright, uh, just the one?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna switch gears and go to our good news. Let's see. So we have
Good news, uh, as Carl has some to show.
Oh, we have some up there.
Put it on the slide, true.
Thank God. Alright, so we have, uh, from Dr. Corey, regarding our new employee orientation. Welcome new staff in meaningful ways. Thank you to Laura Wilbert, Nancy Mitchell, and Carla Cole for collaborating to ensure success with every step. Um, our extended year offers great opportunities for our students to engage in meaningful ways. Thank you to the teachers who greet students every day with a smile and creative activities. Thank you to Chris Delauton, Jordan Brandt for leading our youngest learners, and Christine Cameron and Mike Langridge at BMS for leading our middle school learners. You wanna pick one from each, uh, school, maybe?
Yeah.
Carly, how many you have up here?
There's nine slides, but they're not that long. It's up to you.
Uh, where's Jordan? Which, uh, school?
JK.
JK? Let's read one for her. We had many new families come in for tours of the building this week, and one family commented in particular on how clean the school was. This is a testament to the hard work of our maintenance, custodians, and cleaning staff. Thank you to all you did over the summer to make our building shine for the new school year. From Ms. Nataro, Chris Manfree, the new school psychologist, has been a welcome addition to our team. He is great with students and supports student needs. Ms. West, BHS has enjoyed, I picked the wrong one on this one. BHS has enjoyed a fun-filled homecoming week. Students and staff have been joining in the fun and have had an exciting girls varsity volleyball game against the Grease Griffins, as well as our bonfire on Wednesday night. Students had a blast traveling between events. Our girls were victorious. Congratulations to the volleyball team. Additionally, to our newest set of class murals are underway as the battle between the classes rages on. BHS has an awesome opening across the board, and we are looking forward to a great year. Mrs., oh, go back to Mrs. Wazlowski. She'll yell at me if I don't read hers. Alright, uh, from Mrs. Wazlowski, one thousand kudos to our student support team. Proud and humbled to be a part of it and to work side by side with a masterful interventionist. Um, and there's a ton more on listed. This is listed on our, our webpage, so
Oh, I wanted you to read the Mrs. Gray. I really like that one.
Alright. From Mrs. Gray, the students in Mrs. Gray's class were participating in an experiment with a recipe where they poured three different drinks with different, that's, that's in a cup? You gotta give this to me at a time, Carla. The drink stayed separated and made a, a cool color spectrum. It tasted great, too. So that's awesome for, for her class. So we appreciate everyone sharing the good news. Um, and again, there's plenty more listed, so please go on and take a look for those. Um, we have a ton of presentations for tonight. We're gonna start with our winter guard trips.
Hi, everybody. I'll be quick. I'm Jan Malander. Just a quick, um, note. I'm a grad student at Batavia High. I have, uh, one student in college now, but two are still attending at BHS. And I'm the director of Batavia Winter Guards. So we have two winter guards, a cadet winter guard that's composed of, this year it's gonna be four eight. We're extending it to our fourth graders to get them started a little bit younger. Um, and then our IA, which is high school students. Um, we do have some students from other districts that do come and enjoy being part of, um, the winter guard as well. So this year, um, we would like to have two trips to travel to two regionals outside of the area. We mostly compete locally, um, between Buffalo, Rochester, and some of the southern tier. And we're hoping to be able to go, um, to Philadelphia and to Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. So just a little background, um, purpose of our trips are to stay relevant within WGI Winter Guard International, which is the big, um, net, it says international, because we do see Canadian groups and groups come from different countries depending on the year. Um, but we wanna eventually go to championships again, as we have done in the past, and then going to these regionals helps us stay relevant there. So the first one would be at the end of February, at the end of our February break. We have attended this one in the past. It's really nice, because it's a two-day regional, so it allows the kids to perform more than once, on Saturday and once on Sunday. Um, it's at Council Rock High School. I don't know if you've ever been to some schools out of state, but compared to Genesee County, this is one of those regional schools. I think there are ten high schools, um, that are in this district. So this is almost like a college campus. Um, what we would do is leave on Friday, probably, you know, uh, early afternoon, and then travel to the hotel. We will have a practice time. We will compete, and we will watch other guards, and then return to our hotel. We'll basically do the same thing the next day, but return home. So if students miss class, it might be like two hours of their school day maximum. Um, and then our second trip to Bethlehem, which these aren't too far away from each other. They just happen to be the most convenient ones date-wise this, this year. We'll be at the end of March. So this would be the year we would go to our WGI, um, big championships in April. But we elected to try and do two regionals instead, because WGI takes about four or five days. It would be during our April break. And we are a little bit in a growing year, because we don't have any seniors graduating in this year. Our oldest, um, performer will be a junior, but we just have a lot of kids that are at the younger ages. So we're trying to get back up there. Um, what we would do here is go to another big regional high school, Liberty High School, same thing. Um, go to the competition, perform once Saturday, once Sunday, and then return to school. And then our, our season will finish at Gates Tri-Lite with our local championships. Can I hold on? I pressed it, but just a little slow. It might go twice now, in case. So in order to cover the costs, um, our performers are usually doing fundraisers. We do our fun, big fundraiser is our home show in February, which we get a good chunk of money from that. And then we let that kind of start our season off, as well as some of the things that the school orders up, is, is able to help us with. The school district is able to help us with. But we do some local restaurant fundraisers, a candy bar sale with the rest of the music department, um, our calendar fundraiser, where our students will get, you know, sponsors for each day of a month. Of course, our winter guard show, which is scheduled for February seventh this year, will help us out. And then usually, we do a good one with Batavia's Original. And part of this fundraiser also covers all of the music boosters, um, scholarships that we give out at the end of the year for our graduating seniors. And then lastly, just to talk about taking the kids outside of the area. Um, I have been a high school teacher. This is my twenty-sixth year. I teach in Churchill Tri-Lite. I have taken students for a long time. I taught middle school, so we took them to New York City, like eighty students at a time. And I've headed those, those, um, trips, as well as taking students out of the country for foreign language trips as well. Um, and then also, I'm trained in first aid and CPR, as well as everybody that comes with us. And one thing that we always did anyway in our local circuit was to make sure that everybody was trained, um, it's kind of like, uh, it's not the same one we do through the school, but anybody working with kids goes through some training to make sure that everything's copacetic, they know what's happening. Our staff has been around and been in our program for a long time. But we also have another level this year of training for anybody that spends more than two hours with any students involved in the winter guard. So that's another added thing that we have. We also go through the medical information. I work with the nurses at the schools, and we have multiple chaperones that go. It's not just me and the staff. There's usually other parents. We have a lot of equipment and things like that, too. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer them for you.
How many students?
It'll depend. We're, we're in our, um, tryout stage right now. So it typically ranges anywhere from ten to fourteen students that are performing. Because it's, it's only our older guard that you take. We don't take the younger kids. They do the local stuff. Sorry to reiterate that. Anybody else got any questions?
The home show still is a fundraiser to help offset the cost, too?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we're kind of like always working, you know, a year, a little bit of year ahead. So our home show, which brings in our local guards from, you know, it's mostly Western New York, but we had, we have one of the biggest home shows in our circuit, and we had twenty-six guards last year. And we also have Canadian guards that come, and, you know, we have concessions, we have ticket sales. There are some costs to putting on the show, but they're offset by the sales of all that stuff. And like, we use the whole school. If you ever get a chance to come, even if it's just to watch our kids perform, they're on at specific times, like you would just be, if you've never been to one, like, it's a whole nother world, you know? I used, I've worked bingo at Gates Bingo for my kids a couple of times, because the, my older kids have gone on to do more of this, and my nieces, and outside of high school, and like, it's the same thing. Like, you walk in, you're like, this is a whole different world. I don't play bingo, like. And that's why I feel like you're gonna walk in and be like, oh my gosh, this is a world I didn't know existed, essentially, so. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you very much. Alright, this time we'll need a motion to approve the winter guard trips as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Gonna go over the tryouts now. Have a great evening.
You, too. Our next presenter is Coach Staley for our hockey trips slash tournaments. Hi, Coach.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mark Staley. Honored to be your hockey coach. We, uh, here sort of to ask permission sort of for our yearly trip. We do have, with this pending approval, we do have a twenty-game schedule for our Varsity team in place. We also have an eighteen-game schedule for our JV team in place. Um, right now, we have twenty kids slated to be on the Varsity team this year, nineteen to be on the JV team. So numbers are strong and future looks bright. I'm asking permission to take the Varsity hockey team to the BC Classic, which is a Thanksgiving tournament in Bethlehem, New York, ironically. We did go to this very tournament three years ago. It would be interesting this time, however, because I'm not asking for the kids to have any time off of school, because this is their Thanksgiving break. Some of the parents had an issue with traveling the day after Thanksgiving. Most hockey parents are used to this, traveling on this. So, um, we would play at five o'clock against, uh, Christian, Christian Brothers Academy Albany, um, which is a very good hockey team, um, on that Friday, eleven twenty-eight, and on Saturday, eleven twenty-nine, we would play at ten in the morning against Bethlehem. Uh, they have a beautiful rent there. We'd be paying a plane at the Bethlehem YMCA Center. We would be traveling once again in what we call youth hockey fashion, which means the kids travel with their parents. We do book the hotels altogether for a preferential rate. But in terms of responsibility, I know that's the big thing when we travel with students, um, what are we responsible for? What are the parents responsible for? Uh, the parents are responsible for traveling with their kids, providing them transportation, getting them there, and the kids stay with their parents. We don't do three kids in a room, or four kids in a room, or they stay with their parents. Um, when they're at pregame meals, uh, pregame meetings, or their ice rink, they're under my purview as their coach. And then we go back to the hotel. The parents take the after meals for the kids and things like that. It has worked out wonderfully for us. The first four times that we've asked, we've gone out without a hitch. Uh, these trips have been great for us. This would ironically be the first two games of the season, which I love to get the kids on the road early to build camaraderie. So, um, asking for that, no school off, not asking for any school off, just asking for permission to take the kids, um, on the road out of section. Um, we play twenty games. Ten games are in section five, and ten games are out of section five, which is pretty cool. Uh, section six, section three, section one, and section, uh, ten, we play against teams from those sections this year. Uh, so it's a pretty diverse schedule, so. Any questions?
I have none.
Are you just taking varsity?
Yeah, varsity, it, the varsity team is going, yeah. And we'll have, in the past, we've had some kids that we've dual-rostered.
Yes.
This year, because of our numbers, we really probably won't have that. We may have one or two kids that I will bring up and, and have played down, but it, it's pretty well, it's pretty well split. We have one female player and nineteen male players on the varsity team. And this year, we'll have one female player and, uh, seventeen or eighteen females on the, on the JV team. So it'll be just the varsity team traveling, so, okay?
Uh, Coach, are we still just Batavia Notre Dame? Or do you still have some students from other districts?
No, we are just Batavia Notre Dame.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, and this is the first year. Brady Johnson, oh. We had one student last year from Oakfield, um, who was grandfathered in.
Yeah.
And now it's just strictly Batavia Notre Dame.
Okay.
Numbers are very strong, um, and, uh, roughly fifty-fifty, if you're, if you're interested on the varsity team. The JV team is heavier with, uh, Batavia Middle School, Batavia High School kids. Uh, probably, um, fourteen and, and five, and the varsity team is probably, uh, twelve and eight, in Batavia's favor.
Okay. How's the roster size to pass for you? Is it still good?
Same numbers.
Okay.
I mean, within one or two players, right?
Good.
And so, um, this would be the biggest JV team we've had in a long time, which is great. We had a modified team last year that you guys approved, which was wonderful. We got those seventh graders involved, and seventh graders over at Notre Dame involved, um, which helps build their camaraderie. They all know each other, so, um, I think it's a healthy thing. We are seeing more and more schools merge constantly, though. Okay, we're, one of the games the varsity team has this year is against, follow me here, Depew, uh, North Tonawanda, and Sweet Home. Yeah, three pretty big school districts, one hockey team, and we're gonna play them this year. So even combined with the two schools, our beds number for hockey, um, the only school smaller than us in Western New York is Aquinas. Uh, at five hundred and something, our, our best number combined is a little over six, six point five. And I want over the two minutes that Joel Reed told me that.
You can blame it on me for asking you a question.
Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's a, a great job keeping those numbers. It's a testament to, to your program, so congratulations.
Thank you. Wish I could take the credit for it, but.
Do we have any other questions? Alright, thank you, Coach.
Alright, thanks, guys.
So at this time, we need a motion to approve the hockey trips as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ooh, we'll go, we'll go Barb this time. And do I have a second? And Jan, a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Laura. Congratulations. Alright, and our last presentation is Portrait of a Graduate.
So just in terms of context, I invited Stephanie Burns. Stephanie Burns is one of our school improvement specialists at Voces. And if you've been following the state news, uh, down the road, uh, there's going to be new graduation requirements. It's not gonna affect, um, our current seniors or anything. I identified Stephanie to give you a brief overview of board members, what she should know for down the road. Uh, she's been, uh, working on this hard since it first came out. Um, and she's updating various boards around the region, so why don't you invite, invite her to come here and give you a brief update as to what is in the standard New York State and what may be relevant for you as a board. So thank you, Stephanie.
Happy to be here. Um, so. It's not on? No, it's on. Is this the computer or no?
Hang on, hang on, I'll get it out here.
Oh, okay, there I am. There's me. He already introduced me, so we don't need to do that again. Okay, so, um, my job is to be a liaison between New York State Department of Education and our component districts. So I sit on a committee known as the Graduation Measures Communication Network, and I will be the point of contact for our region, uh, should there be any questions pertaining to commencement and graduation. I will be attending all the virtual meetings and engaging in train-the-trainer sessions, which I'm starting to do here today, and really begin to raise awareness around some of the changes pertaining to commencement. And then should regional districts have questions, you can always reach out to me. Um, and if should the department, the New York State Department of Ed ask for feedback, I'm gonna collect that from our component districts and give it to them as well. So just a little bit of context as to why I'm the one going around talking about this work. Uh, we've had a few actions approved by the Board of Regents, but right now, the majority of this proposed plan is just that, a proposal. So, um, when it comes to some of the items, I will reference them, but many of this is still unknown as to how we're gonna go about it. But, uh, hopefully, I can answer any questions that you have, and if not, we'll put it in the, uh, the parking lot to get answers when more guidance comes from the State Education Department. So why make a change? Um, there's various reasons why we would need to make some changes to the way in which we educate our students in New York State. Um, we have a lot of data and research that shows us that our current system is often, uh, not meeting the needs of, uh, various populations and subgroups of students. Um, students with disabilities, students who are English language learners, students from socioeconomic differences and backgrounds. Um, so this really spurs up the conversation of, do we need to have all these compensatory options and safety net options in New York State? Or are we creating a lot of back channels to meet the needs of kids that were just not meeting their needs? So really, we wanna change the system, so we don't have to create all the loopholes. Also, we want to create a system that reflects the, um, twenty-first century skills that students will need, uh, in their post-secondary life, whether they're going on to college, or whether they're gonna go out into the workforce. We really wanna make sure that they're prepared. I mean, as you all know, the workforce and the technology is changing so rapidly. It's difficult to prepare students for a future that we don't even know that it exists at this time. Um, so we need to be, uh, more responsive in that way, and then just make it more simple. If you know the current guidelines, you would know that it's pretty complicated, um, how to get a, you know, it's almost like doing a little game of connect the dots and making sure all the kids have their credits and all their exams and plus-one pathways. It's like a little math formula at this point. So the state really wants to, uh, simplify and then offer more flexibility for students to show us what they know and what they can do in various ways. And then, um, a lot of this was at the request from the public. So we had meetings with parents, community members, teachers, administrators, students themselves, because, uh, we wanted to know, what do you hope for in a graduate in New York State? And there was a lot of feedback gathered, and so that spurred up some of these changes. So I think framing the why is really important before I tell you what it is, uh, because change is not easy. But when we can ground it in what's best for kids and what's best for our systems, I think that helps a little bit. So that's kind of why. I won't give you a huge history, but essentially, this work started way back before COVID in two thousand nineteen. Um, COVID obviously pumped the brakes on quite a bit of it, but there was a, a committee put together called the Blue Ribbon Commission, and their job was to do a vast amount of research. Um, what do other, um, countries in the world do for commencement for students? And what do other states in our nation do? What are other high schools doing across the country? Um, they did a ton of research, a ton of feedback, and they ultimately boiled that down into some priority areas. Is it your computer that's running it? If I stand closer to you, maybe?
I don't know.
Alright, so then those four priority, priority areas were boiled down into twelve recommendations. You can keep going. And then ultimately led to the four transformations. That's what I'm gonna review with you tonight, are those four transformations, because I think that's the nitty-gritty and what people wanna hear you from. So the four transformations, the first one is to adopt the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, which is actually already occurred, and I can see you already have a lovely poster of that here in the room. Um, the state is looking to redefine credits and learning experiences for students. Um, they're looking to sunset, uh, assessment diploma requirements, and then ultimately move New York State towards one high school diploma. So transformation one is all about the adopting of the portrait of a graduate. Like I said, this actually just happened, and this is really going to be, um, the cornerstone of what we want all students to know and demonstrate proficiency in, in New York State. So this is really the guiding, the guiding light, or the, the lighthouse, if you will, for all, um, schools across our country. So this is actually what it looks like. You have it on the wall. There's also one in your folder. Uh, I'm gonna go through these, um, components with you briefly. But I do wanna mention that the Portrait of a Graduate But I do wanna mention that the Portrait of a Graduate does connect to a lot of the other initiatives that the State Education Department has been working on, which I'm sure you've heard of many of these in your conversations here at your board meetings as well. NTSS, Culturally Responsive Sustainable Education, SEL, a lot of regionalization discussion happening in our small rural schools, CTE, work-based learning, just to name a few. Thank you. So the CRSE, the Culture Responsive Sustainable Framework, is at the heart of all of this work. And all that really means is, we wanna create opportunities in schools where all students feel respected, where they feel like they belong, and that they can be successful. We want them to see themselves in their schooling, be confident in their work. Employees in colleges really want students to be able to understand not only themselves, but how to work with other people when they go into the workforce, and be proud of who they are, all the while respecting others. And that's really what the CRSE is all about. So they kind of put that right in the center of it, just being a good human. Thank you. There are six attributes on the Portrait of a Graduate that all students will have to show their thinking and knowing and understandings about. The first one is being academically prepared. Well, yeah, we've been doing that for a long time in schools in New York State. We've been making sure students are academically prepared. But we would also like to make sure they're creative innovators, so when they go out into the workforce or they're working in post-secondary, they can be innovative. We want them to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, either orally, written, or any other type of way. And we want them to understand the greater world, because our world is more connected now than it ever has been. I mean, we can sit on Zooms with people from across the world and do work at this point in time. And then lastly, as human beings, be reflective and be reflective about themselves and understand how to really focus on their future aspirations. So take care of that whole child, not just the academics nowadays. And that's really what this is all about. You can click one more. All right, the transformation number two is around, so this one has not been approved, only the first one has. This one would be a proposal. They're looking to redefine credits and organize the diploma requirements into those areas of your Portrait of a Graduate. So they'll nest requirements in all of those six attributes. They would like to add more requirements for career and technical education and financial literacy, making sure that students are prepared to be financially stable when they're transitioning into adulthood. I know that's something I talk to my own children about all the time. And then lastly, expand ways for students to show their proficiency in various areas of the Portrait of a Graduate and our learning standards. Those could look like a lot of these things, and many of these things you already do here. You already have high school courses, you already have state exams. If perhaps you already have work-based learning opportunities, and you offer seals and endorsements. So many of these things exist already, but it's just leveraging them, bolstering them, and perhaps even creating some new opportunities that's specific to Batavia High School. And you can click one more. So here's kind of what this looks like, boots on the ground. If I have two students who are working towards effective communicators on the Portrait of a Graduate, I could have student A, who's on the left, earn the seal of biliteracy or complete a capstone project and complete their English language arts class. And then student B could successfully complete a digital media CTE program. She maybe passed her ELA Regents exam, and then lastly, did a summer internship for the newspaper. Both have demonstrated that they are proficient communicators, they just did it in a different type of way. So it doesn't pigeonhole students into one particular way of showing that they can do things. It offers an opportunity for students to put themselves in the driver's seat of their own education, which is very empowering. You're okay, you can go. So that's transformation two. We don't have a lot of information on how that looks yet, but that's the ideal of what they're striving for. And then transformation three is sunsetting assessment diploma requirements. So students will no longer need to pass a Regents exam or a plus-one pathway to graduate high school. They can, if they want to, take a high school Regents exam for commencement. It just won't be a barrier, per se, for students who maybe can show us how, what they can do and what they know in a different type of way. So for example, I'm a special ed teacher by background. Many of my students with disabilities struggle to take high stakes assessments. So this would offer them the opportunity to show us what they know and do in a different type of way, whether it's a capstone, a project, a work-based learning opportunity, whatever that is. So students, all students will have the option to take Regents exams if they're successful with those, or students who don't find success with those will have another pathway to show us. And then I do have to mention that because of federal requirements under every Student Succeeds Act, we are, all districts in New York State are required to give Regents exams in ELA Math and Science for us as a federal requirement. So those will still be a requirement for all students, but they don't have to necessarily pass them to get a diploma. This one's been getting a lot of attention, and so I just wanna be very clear that Regents exams are not going away. They are a viable option for students who do well with taking exams. And last one is transformation four, moving towards one high school diploma. There's that simplification, let's just make it easy, one diploma. If students were to earn the advanced designation, those would now be promissals and endorsements. So I get a lot of people asking me, well, what would set apart a student here at Batavia from maybe someone in Greece, a student in Greece or a student in Pittsburgh? So these seals and endorsements is what kind of elevates students above each other. So if you're looking to find kind of those high flyers, or if colleges are looking at certain students, they might look at some of those seals and endorsements. And districts will have local control to create more of those as you move forward in your, in your journey. So the state is planning to roll this out over a multi-year approach. We just finished the planning year. We're moving into phase one, which is installation. Phase two is initial implementation, and then finally, phase three will be fall 2029 and beyond, which is full implementation and scaling up. And I did stick this in your folder if you wanna look at this later, but it does kind of give you an overview of what is expected in each of these phases. You can see we've already done the portrait. We've provided exemptions for students who have a major life event, maybe the death of a, you know, a loved one, or their house burnt down, or they're, they're moving, or they're homeless. We have opportunities to really consider the whole child and take care of our children. And then we're gonna move into those new credit requirements. Hopefully, by the end of this school year, we'll have more information on that. We're gonna be looking at our standards to make sure that those are all prioritized and formatted well. And then we're gonna get into the sunsetting assessment diploma requirements. So all current requirements still stand until we get some more guidance in this school year here, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then lastly, we would move towards, we're actually gonna move towards one transcript across New York State, which I know makes a lot of guidance offices very happy, because they're all gonna look the same. But we're gonna have transcripts that will show proficiency in the standards and also in the Portrait of a Graduate. And then if we change the standards, we have to change the assessments to make sure they line up, so that's gonna match up with that. So there's the overall timeline. Looks nice on paper, but again, it will be a lot of work for folks to learn different ways in doing things, and it's gonna impact every single one of us. So just wanna make sure everyone knows that we have a nice little rollout, and there's nothing we need to do right now. You can click the next button. And I said I wanted to let everybody know it's gonna take hands, all hands on deck and a shared responsibility to make sure that we're really producing high-quality people when they leave us out of high school. So I'm excited about that. I think it really kicks open the door for many more kids to leave with a high school diploma and show us what they can do and be employable or go to post-secondary. You can click. This flyer is in your folder, you have it. This was created by State Ed. It has all the frequently asked questions and some information about this plan, and that you can click one more. There's the FAQs, I linked those in the slide deck for you. They're also on the state website, you can look over those. And then State Ed does want your feedback from community, admin, teachers, students, and everyone. They want feedback, so continue to put your ideas in there as well. So any questions? I know that was like a very, you know, ten-thousand-foot view, but there's a lot of resources in your folder, especially one pertaining to Boards of Education. This one was actually hot off the press, brand new, created by the state, so that one is specific to your group that you can look through. And then there's several other resources. Does anyone have any questions that I can answer right now?
What grade level are you, is this going to be initiated for? We're not talking just high school, it'll start.
Yes, so it'll be a phased approach. So they're cohorting the children coming into ninth grade, so they'll follow that cohort of student, but the, in your folder, there is a little by cohort. It tells you which grade levels will this be impacting and how. But we're not looking until, I think it's 2029, to really change any commencement opportunities until that cohort of ninth graders gets up there. But holistically, the plan will have an impact K-12, because those attributes that you see on the Portrait of a Graduate, they're gonna be giving us some rubrics of what does that look like, sound like at each grade level, so that we can make sure kindergartners are prepared to be effective communicators, and then when they get to first grade, what do they need to do, and then second grade. So we'll get all that information.
So this expectation of the Portrait of a perfect, sorry, of a graduate for the grade.
I hope it is a perfect graduate, I do.
For every student that graduates?
Yes, this is our new North Star in New York State. This is the, what we're aspiring to produce, if you will, for, of all students when they graduate from high school. It's our North Star. And you can tell we're moving just, you know, academics has always been a priority in New York State, but I think we've realized, especially living through the pandemic, that we need to take care of each other as humans as well, and make sure our students are well cared for academically, socially, emotionally, mental health needs, everything, very well-rounded human.
So the introduction of this whole program will go into the teachers in every grade level as to what's expected for them to help these students reach this?
Yes. That's why I say it starts in kindergarten. We're gonna have to sequentially grow that type of graduate, absolutely. And we will need professional learning as educators, lots of it, different ways to understand the expectations and how to teach them, absolutely.
Now, is there funding?
So during the first Board of Regents meeting, when they proposed this plan, the State Education Department did have a slide that did have dollar amounts in funding that was gonna be allocated and required. That was a while back. I don't know if that's changed necessarily. And the Board of Regents members, if you watch the video back, it's linked in your folder, they do ask questions to the department, is this going to be enough funding? So I think that that's, right now, they're in a little bit of discussion around, is it gonna be enough that we earmarked? And obviously, we've had some changes at the federal level that could be impacting that as well. And I think State Ed has been very open that if we need more time, we'll stretch out that timeline, but we just wanna do it right, because we wanna be right by kids.
And you're also including our special ed kids that graduate?
All kids.
All kids.
All, all, all. That's exactly why they're doing this, because right now, the current system isn't meeting the needs of all.
Okay.
That's really what they're hoping for. Any other questions?
So you were speaking that you can take the class but not have to take the Regents. Does, I'm old enough to remember where you took, you could take Regents courses or non-Regents courses. Would it then all be the same caliber course, but you just opt not to take the test? Because, like, you could take Regents classes and fail the Regents and not enough of the Regents diploma.
There'll still be credits, if you will. They'll be nested in the areas of the Portrait of a Graduate. We haven't got that information yet. But yeah, you can take courses and then demonstrate maybe your proficiency in the standards and in the areas of the Portrait of a Graduate in different types of ways. So instead of sitting down and taking a pen and paper Regents exam, perhaps I do that internship, or perhaps I do a capstone project. Maybe I earn the seal of civic readiness that you most likely already have here at Batavia High School, and that counts for certain. Like, when I think of the seal of civic readiness, it's already gonna hit global citizen, effective communicator, and academically prepared. What's another one? Yeah, definitely those three. So that one course could be pinging a few different areas on the Portrait of a Graduate, if that makes sense. But I don't have the total clarity on what that's gonna look like yet.
I was just trying to see if we're still saying, is everything is gonna be same caliber class, or if you have almost like a Regents versus non-Regents, what?
No, all same caliber. And in fact, they're gonna give us rubrics for each of those areas, and that's gonna keep a very level playing field across New York State. So for example, you don't want a school A to have an expectation here and school B to have an expectation here. And the rubrics will really create a level playing field for all schools across New York State. We just don't have them yet.
And you said you guys did research as far as looking into other schools, having spoken to numerous sorority sisters all over the country. Does anybody else have anything like this Regents? Because when you say Regents diploma and a West Virginia school, they laugh at it.
No, I think we're, we're holding on, we've been holding on tight to history and, you know, nostalgia and the things that we've done in New York State for a long time. But many other states across our country already have a Portrait of a Graduate in place, so I feel like we're joining, joining them in that way. Thank you.
How would you say that this proposal idea is good for to hire students? Because you talked about special ed students, you know, so we're like meeting them, but is there still gonna be challenges for those higher, you know, middle kids, higher kids?
Yeah, that would be the seals and endorsements. So those are gonna kind of take the place of the advanced designations. So, you know, I.
Well, you probably don't know yet.
I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, but you have kids right now who are earning seals and other kids who are not, and that already makes them a standout when it comes to what they put on their resumes and what they put on their college applications. So you kind of already have that happening now, and then we're just gonna really bolster that and create more seals and endorsements. So you may have a student who's looking at a specific field of study in college, and maybe they wanna do some sort of project or work-based learning opportunity that highlights and showcases that they're ready for that program in their, in the college that they're applying for. So like the example of the girl who worked at the newspaper. Maybe she wants to be a journalist, and she wants to go to college to be a journalist, but imagine putting that on your college application. That would be very standout, right? Other questions? It's a lot. There's more to come. We've got a long time to figure it out. Nobody needs to do anything right now, but I just wanted to raise your awareness a little bit and give you some information. All right?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, thank you. Do you need me to send you a card? No.
Thanks, Stephanie, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna have it here. No, it's not working.
You don't either. You wanna try yours?
Go ahead, try it. Just do it by hand, if you have to.
So you guys are playing with that.
Yeah, sorry.
He's anxious and ready over there. All right, we're gonna switch over to Eli, and we'll have your report, sir.
I don't have much to talk about so far, but I would like to make a comment on the new internet device policy and homecoming. So first with the new internet device policy. In my opinion, based on my expectations and how I feel other students expected it to go, I felt the collection and redistribution of cell phones went a lot smoother. Personally, I found it pretty easy just to walk in, drop in my phone, and then walk out. I've seen them move the filing cabinets in and out of the lock store closet, and I felt the, I just thought it went really well. I even asked in an interview on the Blue Devil Radio Podcast, the co-mayors, who are elected students by the student body, and they agreed that not only was it easy for them to give up their phones, but they're also engaging in much more conversation with their peers during lunch, even during study halls, during class. So overall, I think from a student perspective, it's gone really well. Moving on now to homecoming. On Friday, obviously, as most of you know, that probably know, the football team won. And I felt that there was a lot of student engagement during the week with the different themed dress-up days over the course of the week, as well as the boys' volleyball game Tuesday morning, the girls' handball on Thursday, and then the bonfire on Wednesday night. I felt a lot of people had fun with that, and many people went to that. My favorite part, the pep rally featured a performance by the VHS drumline, of which I'm a part of, so I'm very proud of what we did as a drumline, even during the football game, how we performed. So I'm, so far, I'm looking forward to a good school year, and I think it'll be fun.
Excellent. It's good to hear that the new electronic device policy going well and was received good by the student bodies. Any other comments? All right, good job, sir.
Mr. Smith?
All right. Good job, sir. Mr. Smith?
I think I figured out what the problem is.
Did you figure it out?
Yeah. Okay, my, I'm going to include opening day for staff. I recognize by left, our mayors, Helena and Anthony gave a very nice welcome to our faculty and staff on the opening day. Top left, we have our core students that sing our all-in-all. We recognize our staff members with 25 years of service. Thank you to them. And our board president, John Regal, dressed as staff as well. There were other events that occurred that day, but just want to recognize and thank the board members who were there. Thank our students that participated. Congratulate our 25-year veterans. And that was the opening day events for our staff. Our first day of pictures for our students, we have, obviously happy to see our students back. They all came back on Thursday. There's some opening day pictures that we had taken at the various sites across our schools. As Eli mentioned, he talked about how well the cell phone collection has gone. There were some pictures. I actually helped out the first day when we had backlog. And now what's happening, it's pretty much self-service. So the students either leave their phone in their car or they leave them at home. Several bring them in and you can see there across, at these, at both at the middle school and the high school, they're placed in pouch, they're placed in folder, they're locked. And as the feedback got going from students as well, including my own child, it's going well. I brought some kids with me on the radio last month or so, some of our student athletes, and they also commented that they're playing board games again, they're talking. So we're pleased both with the results of the process and the, and the implementation. Thank you to our staff, Dr. Cry and Ms. West for their leadership, Monday alone assistant as well. As you can see, the center picture is at the middle school. The other ones are, the top left is at the middle school as well. It was happening in the middle school as the students entering two different doors. It helps them filter through. In the high school, we actually have two collection points, one by the main doors and then which is on the far right there with Mr. Kirkwood. And then on the far left, we have one by the bus doors. Honestly, the only confusion we had was some students dropped it off in one location and went to try to pick it up in a different location. So once we fixed that, they seemed to understand. So that's going well, as Eli had mentioned. Robert Morris playground build, very exciting. We did that two weekends ago. We have several volunteers there. Mr. Lang, of course, bottom left was quite handy. He was there for a good part of the day Saturday. We had a buildings and grounds crew there for Saturday. Thanks to them, myself and Jessica, Jessica Cozilis was there. It came out very nice. Here's some, the finished products, not there yet, but you can see the finished products are there on the bottom right. We're just waiting for the, what do you call it, the bottom part? The turf parts, you know, be put in, the fences come down. We're planning a ribbon cutting ceremony later this fall. So we'll invite the board and the public to that. But thank you to Robert Morris and our volunteers, our principal, Mrs. Cozilis, and our contractors, our vendors and our buildings and grounds crew. We have several of them there on Saturday. All of our thank, this is the letter that I published in the Batavian. All the names are there, including our, our staff and our volunteers that assisted with the playground build a couple of weekends ago. So again, thanks to them. Open houses, we have, we've had two, two already. September 11th, we had Robert Morris, the other Robert Morris staff, they're on the right. Jackson was last week, I was able to attend Jackson. Great turnout there. Middle school is this Thursday. And then the high school is October 9th. And Eli mentioned homecoming. Here are some cool pictures from homecoming. Our Blue Zoo, our cheerleaders, we had our students dress up at the bottom right there. We had a great pep assembly. Favorite thing to watch is the musical chairs game. So that was always fun. Mrs. Nataro was there in the top right there with her students at Jackson. We celebrated across the district. And as Eli said, it was, it was a successful week. And upcoming dates for the board, we have tomorrow a visit from our legislators on our preschool program. I believe Corinne is coming to that and I'll say, maybe perhaps Barbara is going to be present for that. Start at 10:30 to Robert Morris. Open house is Thursday. JK open house is, I meant to say before, is Thursday, October 2nd. BHS is the 9th. You had a workshop on the 9th with myself and Dr. Corey and professional learning communities. And then quite a ways away, but the musicians and no induction ceremonies coming up on October 23rd. It's always a nice event at the Frank O'Malley Auditorium. And any questions? All the dates are there. See, Jen's writing down.
I got it.
Very good, Jen.
Carla takes care of me. She sounds like I'm giving them a bite.
Like you don't have my eyes.
And that's all I have. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm going to add an item on right now for the reports, not necessarily a report, but more of a, a statement with some things that have been going on in the district. I think it's important that we address this evening. So this is a, a statement that I prepared for our fellow board members and members of the community. I'd like to address a growing concern that is increasing and impacting both the learning environment in our schools and the atmosphere at our school-sponsored events, and that's student discipline. As a district, our core mission is to educate students. Our teachers, staff and administrators are here to teach, not raise or continue to discipline students who choose to ignore our rules. Unfortunately, more and more instructional time is being spent managing disruptive behavior. This not only takes away from learning, but also undermines the experience of students who consistently meet the expectations. To our families and community members, our schools have clear rules for a reason. When students choose not to follow them, administrators must be empowered to contact a parent or a guardian to have that student picked up immediately. If these calls become more frequent, it's a sign that discipline needs to be reinforced at home, not left solely to our schools. When expectations are followed, the calls stop and learning continues. Like each of us, our educators deserve a work environment built on respect. They should not be subject to ongoing disrespect or disruption without consequence. The same is true for students who meet expectations. They deserve a classroom in a school setting free from unnecessary distractions. In response to the recent incidents, including last Friday's football game and in direct conversation agreement with our superintendent, Mr. Smith and the board would like to propose an immediate update to district policy regarding student attendance at events. Specifically, we are recommending the following changes effective immediately. Number one, all minors below high school age, that's eighth grade and younger, must be accompanied by a responsible adult to attend Blue Devils home games and any similar district event. That minor must remain with the adult in the stands for the entire event. Unsupervised minors will no longer be permitted to congregate around concession stand areas, practice fields or non-seating areas. These events are meant to build school spirit and support our student athletes. Attendees are expected to model respect, sportsmanship and appropriate behavior. Any adult who's attending and fails to meet those expectations will be asked to leave immediately and may be subject to be suspended for future events at the discretion of the administration. Our goal is simple. We want classrooms and school events to be safe, welcoming, enjoyable for all families. Children should be able to sit in the stands, watch the game and dream about one day playing under the same, those same lights for the Blue Devils. And that dream starts with the right environment today. We're committed to restoring a culture of respect and accountability, both in our classrooms and in all school affiliated events. But this effort requires everyone's cooperation from our staff, from our students, but most importantly, from our families. Therefore, in partnership with our superintendent, I respectfully request that the board support this immediate policy update recommended by Mr. Smith and formally direct and support the superintendent in his and his staff's effort to reinforce both these new event expectations and the student discipline policies already in place and communicate this with district families this week. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, emails going to go out to our families tomorrow morning reflecting those comments that Mr. Regal mentioned about the changes at the football game. So families can be expected to have sometimes from our morning at Parents Square. They've also been in touch with the city and with the BBD. We're planning another statement to come out this week as well in response to the events that happened Friday night. So there'll be more information coming throughout the week. I've also asked the principals, at least Dr. Cry and Ms. West, to announce these changes all week, each of the schools, so as to much I aware.
I, I think it's important to stress as well, you know, attending these events is a privilege, just like playing sports and our, and our extra activities that we offer. And if we can't behave, those privileges are taken away. Right, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, yes, that was my thoughts.
Thank you, Jen.
Any other comments from the board? No?
I, I'll, I'll say, I think it's a great, unfortunately, I would hate, I hate to see that this policy has to exist. But the fact that we are, you know, not tolerating it. I think now is behind the scenes, what can we do to get ready, you know, for the next game and make sure, you know, someone doesn't come through and, you know, complains that they can't get in or whatnot. But just as long as the communication is good, then I'm all for it.
I think again, it's a partnership between, you know, parents, guardians, our staffs and the students, everyone working together because everyone wants that ultimate goal for their, the, the kids and to, to learn and grow and become modeled citizens in our community.
It's a definite partnership. I agree completely.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Moving on, we are going to move to grouping of our consent items. And that'll be to group items E through K on our agenda. Do I need a motion to approve the grouping of consent items? Mrs. Anderson, do I have a second? By Barb, any discussion on any items? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, that will bring us to item L, which is old business. And that is for our BCS, the safety plan. We need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All right, Ms. Lundby, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is for new business. Need a motion to approve our facilities fee schedule for regulation R280, excuse me, 3280R, use of school facilities. Do I have a motion for, to approve that?
So moved.
By Barb, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And other reports. Our other reports, as far as administrative reports for curriculum and instruction in our business office are listed on our school website, so please take a look on that. Second item under there is for board member comments. Any board members have any comments? Or any topics you'd like to discuss?
I just want to acknowledge the high school principal and the middle, middle school principal. I saw, I worked the concession stand at the game on Friday. And just to see them before the game, talking to the students, you know, asking how former students were, you know, just seeing their excitement. I mean, as, who really wants to be there on a Friday night if, you know, that's their job? But you can tell that they, you know, they do enjoy it and it was, it's nice to see them there interacting with our, our students.
And the only other thing I have to point out, it was on our social media and I believe it's on our website as well. We had a great video regarding our kindergarten program.
Oh, yes, yes.
Mrs. Nataro and Emily did a great job putting together a, a video on introducing our, our kindergarten program. Mrs. Clark was in there, just really shows where, where the grassroots are and where it starts at.
We plan on making similar videos like at other schools.
Excellent. Yeah, it was a great highlight for, for that.
Well, and I want to give a shout out, being in, my son is in the Bulldogs and we're there all day because I shoot pictures and it's amazing to see a kid's face when our teacher shows up. You have no idea how my teachers take their Saturday to come and watch little tiny people play football. But the look on a child's face when they look and they're like, oh my God, that's my teacher, that's my teacher. They think it's the coolest thing and our teachers obviously don't have to be there and spend their Saturday watching five, six-year-olds play football. But it's a, it's a huge, huge deal to them and I thank them for taking the time out of their day to come and support these little guys and girls.
All right. So we're going to make a motion for adjournment and call for executive session, which we will not return the public session. The call for executive session is to, a motion to move to executive to discuss matters related to collective negotiation pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.